I think we're ready to go, call the meeting order. Please rise, join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first on our agenda tonight, I want to open. Now I gotta. Go to another link because I was about to read. The agenda first starts with a public hearing, I want to call the public hearing pursuant to statute 118.38 sub 1 sub B to order. This is pursuant to a request to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction.
Call the public hearing pursuant to statute 118.38 sub 1 sub B.
This is pursuant to a request that. To be made to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction to waive the minimum number of hours of instruction as set forth in statute 121.02 paren 1 paren F for the 2021 school year due to the ongoing COVID-19 public health emergency. So as part of the public hearing, I'll ask for any written or recorded comments that were submitted by the 4pm deadline as set forth in our agenda. Is there any such comments? All right. Hearing none, I will then call for comments within the room. This is our first call for public comment with regard to a request be made to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction regarding a waiver of the minimum number of hours of instruction. Hearing none, I'll now make a second call for any public comment regarding a request to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction pursuant to section 121.02 paren 1 paren F for the 2021 school year. Hearing none, make a third call, any comment from the public regarding the request of the district to the Department of Public Instruction. As set forth in the statute and that request is being made pursuant to the COVID-19 public health emergency. Hearing no comment, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
It's been moved in the second hall in favor of closing the public hearing regarding pursuant to section 118.38 sub 1 sub B, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it and the hearing is closed. I'll now go on onto our agenda for our meeting today. Are there any. Recorded or public. Recorded or written comments for tonight regarding non-agenda items? All right, there are none. Are there anyone here wish to speak on any non-agenda items? Hearing none, move on to recognitions and I'll turn this over to our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Grambo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
I should have said Dr. Grambo, right?
Thank you.
All right.
We have two very special recognitions tonight. We're going to start with our recognition of the one act play. We're going to invite Lori Harmon, Sandy Burke, and Owen Olson up to the table to be recognized. Sandy and Lori are both English teachers at the high school and they're co-advisors of the one act play. The one act play is a offshoot of forensic, so it's part of forensics, but it sort of operates by itself. I interviewed Lori and Sandy and learned a little bit more about this. And you're going to hear just a little bit about what a wonderful opportunity the one act play is, especially during COVID. Provided an opportunity for some kids that don't have access to their theatrical passions to still participate and some very special awards. So. The overall. Experience was awarded state level recognition as the all-state award for the one act play, bad audition, bad actors. In addition to that, Owen was awarded the ensemble award for outstanding individual actor. And we'd also like Tatiana's not here, but in talking to Sandy and Lori, she served as the student director. And from what I heard, took charge, did a great job of leading that. So a wonderful leadership opportunity for Tatiana. And several other participants as well that couldn't be here tonight, but also deserve our recognition. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sandy and Lori to tell just a little bit about the one act play and then entertain any questions from the board.
Oh, I'm sorry. I won't touch anything now. Okay. Um. Are we good, Ryan? So we've been doing this for a couple of years now. Sandy, you're ahead of me and the kids get together, they choose a play. It's a one act play. They put it on, they do, it's really supposed to be very student-led and it is, we work really hard to kind of step back and just facilitate. And this year was really very, very challenging because rather than going to locations and performing our play multiple times, hopefully. We had to record it. And Ryan Delacroix, who I really want to recognize was a great, great help for us. He was, made himself available. He helped us to record it. He, he processed the recording and then we had to submit it and the kids had to wear masks. And we had to fit him with microphones under their masks and we had to keep the distance. And it was so challenging, but they were awesome. They rose to the occasion. We got costumes and everything going and. It was a great opportunity, I really think, for all of them. And it was wonderful to see them come together. They worked as a team. They got the ensemble award and they, they really pulled together and did. It was just great teamwork all the way around. Anything you want to add, Sandy?
Yeah, from beginning to end, they, they chose the play. So we read through. And several plays, multiple plays, and they, they finally settled on a play and then they also improved. They, they take the feedback from the judges and they did a great job of that too this year, which again was. Everything was just different because normally you get it like right there, the judge talks to you and so it was just a real different process this year, but from beginning to end. It was just very rewarding and valuable and we really appreciated the effort that the students put into it this year for sure with all of the. Different parameters, so.
And we had some COVID scares and things like that, some quarantines and things to deal with, but they were champs. They really were. They all checked in. So.
And Owen, would you like to say a few words about the experience from your perspective?
Sure. Yeah, so as they said, it was just an all-around. Great time, got to meet new people, act on a stage, just do the things that I love to do and even in a COVID year was great because. This was the first year that I've done it and in the previous years I've been a person who does the. The musicals and the plays through the actual high school, not the club, but since those aren't happening this year, it was a great opportunity for me and some others to. Find a new group of people who have the same interests as me and just have a great time. It was, it was very fun.
Owen played three parts. He really embraced his role.
Rob?
I hope that none of you have seen it.
No. Mr. Minor has seen it, so. Yeah.
Go ahead, Rob. Did you have a question?
I did. And so how many students were there and is this a freshman through senior opportunity or can you tell us more about the, the group?
We have a small group. It's fluctuated the last three years that I've been a part of it. This year we had eight students and yeah, we have, it is freshmen through seniors, the student director is a senior, unfortunately. So we're going to lose her for next year, but somebody else will step up because she did not do, she was not the director last year. And so this was her first year doing that and yeah, she was just amazing at it. So yeah, we were a small, compact group, but hopefully, you know. Word will spread and we'll just kind of keep growing the program to the club.
Yeah, Tatiana Lindsay is her name and she was the, the director and then should we name, should we name all the kids? I don't know. Okay. Do you? I've got to go. I do know their names. You're putting me on the spot now. Renee Miller, Tatiana Lindsay, Taylor. Van Dyke, see, I'm, I'm nervous. Taylor Van Dyke, Kayla. Stella Minor, yes. Tobin. Bone Steel and I think, is that all? Oh, how could I forget? And Evgenia Roth, yeah, so.
Okay, Heather?
So, so in response to your, I hope none of you have seen it, Owen. I'm curious. I'm curious, now that we know this was recorded for submission, is it out there somewhere that if folks are watching and they would love to watch it? Is it on the site or could it be on the district site or somehow linked so we could see it?
We would, we would love to do that, but it would cost us a lot of money in, in rights. We had to be really careful with, in fact, we had a showing for parents last week. But we had to be very careful with theater rights because somebody, you know, wrote that play and so we can only perform it for certain, in certain situations. But if you want to know what Owen did, he was a Shakespearean actor and he overacted. And then he was an interpretive dance.
Yes.
Modern dance.
Wearing a.
Yeah.
Well, you could, you could recreate the moment for us right now, Owen.
He wore, I had a morph suit. We were really very creative with our costumes. I had a green morph suit. I don't know if you know what those are. They're like head to toe that you can zip it all the way up.
Leotard but for men.
Yes, and so we, he wore that with some appropriate coverings. And you know, we modified it and so he wore that. And then what was your other one? You were just. You were, oh, you were Charlize. And he was a very demanding actress who expected. Some pretty special treatment, things like chocolate-covered Skittles and things like that. So. So he, yeah, he really embraced his roles as all of those characters, so.
And Owen, and Owen, do you have, are you going to go on to acting or theater beyond high school?
Um. If the opportunity presents itself right now, I'm planning to go to music school actually. But, but if there's a theater group anywhere in my future life, I, I hope to keep it a part of my life for as long as I can, whether it's acting or directing or supervising, whatever. Yeah, and I'm at the PIPs doing a show right now.
All right, awesome. Well, we'll watch for you for future Tony Award nominations.
We'll see.
Maybe, maybe in modern dance.
All right, well, very good. Thank you and congratulations. All right, we have a second recognition. Dave, is that yours as well?
It is, yes, thank you. Another very special recognition. We'd like to invite Madison Meyer up to the table. I'm going to tell you a little bit about Madison Meyer because I'm not sure if most of you had the chance to meet her yet. But she works in the district at Willa River for School Age Care in North Hudson where she does recess duty. And in addition, I'm sure you can see she proudly serves our nation as a soldier in the National Guard. I had the chance to interview Madison as well and she's absolutely delightful and very dedicated to the district and our country. And we have a lot to be proud of sitting at the table because it's not just Madison we're recognizing tonight. Madison went out of her way to recognize two of our staff members and in many ways, the district as a whole. So she nominated Michelle Hagan and Tracy Havishaleen for the Guard's Patriotic Employer Award and both received this distinguished award. It is a award that essentially recognizes employers that are incredibly respectful for those that answer the call to serve. And make sure that they treat our soldiers with respect and dignity. And it's, it's not as Madison described in automatic. She had to go out of her way to make sure that Tracy and Michelle were recognized. So I'll turn it over to them to tell a little bit about the, the award and Madison, if you could start out, that would be great.
Um, sure. So within my unit, I had gone to my first sergeant and asked him how it works for putting your employer in for the Patriot Award. And he gave me the contact information and so I called that person. And from there, they said that they thought that Tracy and Michelle would both be eligible for the award. From there, he sent me a link and I wrote up a little short paper for both of them about how kind and supportive they are, how they're always checking in with me. They make sure that I have anything and everything I need when it comes to my service, which is very appreciated. COVID's been crazy for everybody and for the National Guard especially, we've had to work elections. I have people from my unit that have gone on COVID orders to help with COVID relief or vaccinations and stuff like that. So it's been a hectic year and it's. It's really nice to have two people that very much care about me and my service.
Michelle, do you want to tell a little bit about your perspective and, and how you accommodate Madison's service?
Sure. Um, I was really surprised to get the award from. Madison because it just seems like this would be something that you would do. It wasn't that I was working hard at it. We, Tracy and I try to support people who need to have time off and we also are very proud of Madison's service to the country. So when we did get the, the award, which was really nice, I have it in my office and we got this nice pin too. And, um, but at the end of the day, Madison is an awesome employee. She has a positive attitude. She works well with the students. They like her. She came on, was it Veterans Day?
Yeah.
In her outfit and the kids were playing in her pockets and wanting to try on the outfit. So. She's just a great employee to have and so I, Tracy and I would not want it to be hard for her to, or feel conflicted at all about having to be gone for. This service and we are a lot of times short-staffed and it, she could possibly feel like she was leaving us in a short-staffed situation. So I always feel that it's important to say Tracy will be more than happy to come down and sub. And, and then she does. So it's a really proud moment for school age care. Thank you, Madison.
And, and I'll just add that, yes, this is a very special honor for Michelle and I, but really it is about Madison and. Her service to not only the school district, but to country. And she wore her uniform again today. So that's, I mean, it, she's an awesome role model for our kids. And they, they definitely enjoy that. And I'd just add that Madison, along with her school age care colleagues this year, have served our families and kids with courage, commitment and compassion. They've been at it since March. They've been at it since before we had mandated masks and before Plexiglas, they were there. And Madison had that additional duty to serve her country at a time where the National Guard hasn't been this active since World War II. So. Hats off to, to Madison juggling both of those.
Very good. I've got board members that have comments, so Rob?
No, Madison, first off, thank you for your service, certainly. And thanks for, for nominating both of these wonderful people. You know, Tracy, Michelle, thank you very much for. What you're doing in support of our troops. Frankly, every employer should be nominated. They should earn that opportunity and if they're not, shame on them. So thank you for everything you're doing. And Sue?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I think this year has been the year where we've seen our Guards, National Guard. Involved in many dimensions of our day-to-day life. And I guess I didn't know about this connection to Michelle and, and Tracy. And so I, I guess I'm not surprised that our. Employees multitask and fill in in many ways that we're not aware of. So thank you to both of you. Congratulations.
I do really good on the days where they're working on shrinky dinks. I've learned how to operate the machine. I'm awesome now.
All right, and Bob?
I'd just like to say, you know, again, thanks for everything, great awards, great effort. And, you know, I was wondering what it would be like to be able to go into a classroom in a uniform like firefighter, policeman, military. I mean, you're just a rock star when you go in with those kids. And, you know, I used to sell paper and printing, so pretty, pretty non-exciting for the kids, but thank you very much.
Anyone else? Yes. Yeah, thank you again, Madison, for your service and this is a year where. Our, our reserve and our service is protecting, the National Guards protecting both democracy and literally life and death with the vaccination. So really appreciate that service. Also, thank you for the nomination, bringing the recognition and congratulations to Tracy and Michelle. All right, so with that, thank you, Dave, for presenting the recognitions. I'll turn it over to Dr. Arlet for our reports.
Okay. All right, so hopefully you can, you can hear me all right. And again, thank you for her service. She's been outstanding. Our, our whole school age care staff has just really risen to the challenge this year. As, as Tracy alluded to, I mean, they've been going, providing childcare even from the very beginning for our first responders and, and keeping things, keeping things going. So it's, it really is great to see that recognition. As we look at the COVID operational update, a couple of things want to touch on, vaccination update. We are still in a waiting game as far as it goes with our staff and, and whether or not, when we think the rest of them are going to get vaccinated. This is the week that we have about two-thirds of our staff that is, is. Did get their first round shots. This week, there's about, you know, those same folks are getting their second round shot. And so. You know, kind of observing what that looks like. We've had some people already get their second shot, trying to make sure that. You know, because you hear of kind of the adverse reactions to the second shot and it's for the most part been pretty uneventful, I think, as we, as we work through that, but we are working through that. I will say I had a call with St. Craig County Public Health today. The ability to come across vaccine right now is becoming more and more challenging. I think two weeks ago, they requested 500 doses of the vaccine. They received zero from the state. Last week, they requested 400 doses of the vaccine. They're, they received 50. And so now that is in addition to the, the second round vaccines. So, you know, one of the questions that I did ask in the call today was, are we going to anticipate that this is going to be like a three or four-week cycle where. For three weeks, we're going to see people get their first round shot and then for another three weeks, it's going to be all the second rounds. And then again, we'll go to the three weeks again, first round. And, and that had not been communicated one way or the other at this point, but there's also some concerns because they are talking about mass vaccination sites down in Milwaukee and, and Madison is that. Are, is the state pooling all the vaccinations to be utilized for those mass sites down in the southeast corner of the state, which. Not that it's bad, but you know, we have needs up here and we'd like to make sure that, that our residents up here are still gaining it. I did reach out to several of our elected representatives to ask. So that they could ask that question of, of the health, Department of Health because. It seems like our, our local health officials have tried to ask those questions, things like that, and they're not getting much for a response from the state-level health department as we, as we work through this. So. It's just kind of something to keep in mind. It, it, the county has, countywide, both through the county and through the private providers, they have administered almost 10,400 vaccines. Of which 8,000, a little over 8,000 have been first doses and about 2,300 have been second doses. So. It's, it's both encouraging and somewhat disheartening considering that we have 90-some thousand residents in the county and here we are in February and we have about. Just under 3% that have actually completed the vaccination. Cycle all the way through. Now, we're hoping that that's going to change as some of these new vaccines come, come online. They did say today that they're hoping that. By March, they would see an increase of about 20 to 25% of vaccines, the amount of vaccines available and then by April, about another 20 to 25% increase from there. And a lot of that has to do with potentially. A couple of these new vaccine makers that are working through the emergency authorized use process as we work through that. So. We'll continue to monitor and, and try to get this done. Our staff, like I said, we, we've had about two-thirds vaccinated. I know there were some questions about whether or not we were unique. I think there are quite a few school districts across the state that have had the opportunity to get their staff vaccinated and so. It's not as though Hudson was overly unique in, in trying to do that. And so we're, we're working through that, seeing when we can get the rest vaccinated as we continue to move forward. A couple of items, other items related to COVID, we are starting our, our COVID meetings as we, as we talked about, it's kind of almost like the return to learn plan that we were doing in the summer, but almost in reverse. As we kind of talk about how do we potentially look at long-term winding some of these things down, but also what does the summer look like and even next fall? Starting to have conversations about, will we have the ability to run prom? Will we have the ability to run graduation? If we do those things, what do they look like? And, and it's going to look a little different to what are spring sports going to look like? And, and also just trying to understand, you know, as we, you know. Ratcheted things down or as we, you know, kind of tighten some of our mitigation strategies, you know, the, the other piece is then eventually, how do we start to release some of those strategies? So that there's, you know, a plan in place for that. So now it's not just all of a sudden we go from one day, everybody being in mask and behind Plexiglas and all these things to all of a sudden, the next day, it's like, no, everything's fine. And so, you know, looking at what are some gradual release things that we can try and see what happens? And, and always know that we can always tighten some things up as we, as we look at those things. But again, it's, that's kind of some of the ongoing discussion that we're going to be having. Over the next, over the next few months as we, as we move forward. As far as cases in the district, I'm going to go ahead and see if I can share my screen. Okay, and I know that's somewhat. Hard to see. But in our, in our count is we're, as we're working through right now. Over the past, it'll be 14 days tomorrow. We've had a total of two cases at the high school. Two cases at the middle school, one at Rock, one at Prairie, none at Holton. North Hudson has had no cases over the last two weeks. Rivercrest has had three. And then Willow River has had a total of four cases. And I, I think the, the thing to keep in mind with some of the Willow River cases is it was a family of siblings. And so. Some people say, well, gosh, that's, that's a lot more cases than Will has had in a week. And so it was a family situation. And so. As we go to the top and again, I want to make sure that I don't make everybody sick as I scroll to the top, but I think it's important for us to see. When we look at the total counts, we have had 338 cases in the district since we've started the school year. You can see kind of where our numbers, where our numbers are sitting, but essentially. This two-week period where we're at 13, we would anticipate that, you know, we may have a, a few cases based on the way numbers are going. We have a few more cases by the end of the day tomorrow. But this would be arguably one of the, the best three, you know, that top three. Or best three two-week periods we've had since we've started school, which is really great. Gets here and we have been face-to-face instruction with all, all of our grades since. Was it the 18th of January, I think is when we had every, or 19th of January, because we weren't in school on the 18th, which was a Monday. But we've had everybody, everybody 100% back-to-back since then. And we've actually been in hybrid since we returned from, from winter break. So. It is, it is definitely. Positive and we'll continue to keep an eye on that. We know that there's obviously different variants out there and different strains and we're kind of keeping an eye on those things. But. Again, this is, this is, this is really good news. And I think really, as we looked at some of the data from St. Craig County Public Health that they shared with us today, one of the things that kind of. Seems to be the case is our cases in schools tend to mirror that of the community. I mean, it's not as though we are seeing more. Cases as far as, you know, when it accelerates and when it comes down. So as of right now, the county numbers are. In really, you know, in really pretty good shape. I'm going to take us to this next screen here. So the screen that you're seeing here, this is the daily totals for the state of Wisconsin. I think this is, you know, very promising, 543 new cases. Today in the state of Wisconsin with quite a few people, I mean, that the, having about one-sixth. Positivity rate is actually better than where we've been. So that's, that's really promising. As we go down, you could kind of see where the trajectory. As we go down, you could kind of see where the trajectory trajectories have gone, you know, and we're on that downward slope, which is, which is great. But then the the other piece, this piece of information that we look at, oops, I'm sorry. I'm trying to look at the screen up there, but I should be just focusing down here on my computer. So when we look at, when we look at county data, the average, you know, over seven days, last seven days, 11.4 in the county. So that's per 100,000 residents and we're we're not quite there. But then the other piece of data that we now have access to, which is what our school closure matrix is tied to. Let's see if it comes up. Of course, as we're live, it's taking a little bit longer. So within the school closure matrix, you can see the Hudson School District, I'm sorry, within the the county's data. Our number is is 6.4 per 100,000. And so when we go to our school closure matrix, that what that does is that puts us almost in the far left hand column, which is fully face to face. And so we are really in a pretty good spot as we are moving forward. And really, when you look at the entire state. In in general, the state's in a much better spot than where it was, you know, a month ago or two months ago. And so that's those are, that's great news as we continue to look at those different different counts. So any questions on COVID or the numbers or anything else that, you know, related to COVID? Okay. That Andrew, go ahead.
I didn't know if you wanted to mention quick, we hadn't talked about it, but because of the news with the Ed Foundation.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
We're doing year two of the Wellness Walk and this year we're focusing on wellness overall. So not only the physical, but also the emotional and spiritual health of our staff. And so we're really pushing on it. Hopefully your staff will be engaged regardless of their fitness activity level. We want participation and engagement. And Nick had reached out to the Ed Foundation and they are willing to fund it. So that's super exciting for us and we just had that news today. So I thought maybe that'd be a good opportunity to share. And if y'all want to participate and sign up on a team like you did last year, hopefully you'll want to do that. We have our team. Cabinet's called the Quorn Team. We are trekking through the national parks. We're going from Canada to Mexico. And so you'll have access to the mission, my virtual mission app for three months instead of one month. And again, we're going to do lots of fun activities throughout this first month.
And when does it start?
It starts this Friday. So if you want to sign up, you got to sign up on Wednesday and we have a little goody bag too, if y'all sign up. So it's a win win.
Yes, Carrie.
If we are to sign up, can you send a specific link that we can click on and be in and?
Yes, and we are doing it different this year too, where Holly Thorson in my office is signing manually signing everybody up. And then she's going to be our point person. So anybody that needs help, she'll be sending out specific help and be a contact that we can.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, Carrie, for asking for that.
To get it all to sync together, but it's really fun activity and we have a lot of fun stuff planned coming up.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's been me and staff is, you know, especially in this year where there's been a high level of stress and everything we're asking people to do. It's great to be able to try to do some of these self care initiatives and wellness initiatives and Andrea's department's really done an outstanding job. Leading that charge and people, people love it. I mean, they're really into it. You said over 300, is that what you said?
Yeah, last year we had about 350 and we're hoping for about the same this year. And what's also great is that we're getting teams, we're also getting individuals. So everyone just wanting to be part of it. And I think that's a really fun message and we'll keep going with it. So if you sign up, we'll give you more activities that you can participate in as well.
Great. Right. So continuing down the the list, registration update, just to kind of brief update on registration and is we 4K and kindergarten registration is out and we are actively taking children to register for that, parents doing that for their kids. Our school registrations are open. Middle school and high school have started to register for classes for next year and we have actually initial course requests, I think. I don't know, Dave, there's anything you want to add registration wise or it's just, this is kind of the season.
Yeah, the only thing that I would add, if you remember the last time we talked about the 4K change where we're exploring some other opportunities in the district, we are gathering that data through that process. So in the coming months, we'll have more idea of what that interest is and we'll let you know.
So next one on the list is the school board candidate forum. I know we have two incumbents that will be there, I believe, tomorrow night. So that I believe Tracy sent out earlier today to all of our parents, a link to the the YouTube live that will be running, just kind of like what we do with board meetings. But we will allow up to 150 guests in the auditorium, the first 150 that that would like to come. We will allow pies in the face to candidate. No, I'm kidding. But no, it always always a good, and I believe it's being sponsored or put on by the Parents Association. Is that right, Tracy?
Middle school.
Yep, Middle School Parents Association. And so it is from 6:30 to 8:30 tomorrow night. So again, you can watch that or or attend live as we do that. And then the last thing I just want to touch on, it's not quite on the agenda, but I'll make a stretch. Is we do have the neighborhood meeting for the, you know, the high school sign. You've been trying to put a sign at the high school. The Ed Foundation is financing the sign at the high school. Part of the city's revamped ordinance process and conditional use permit process requires us to have a neighborhood meeting with all the neighbors within 300 feet of the high school property, anybody would like to attend. So that's going to be on Thursday night. If you would like. I will have make sure Tim sends you a Zoom link so you can zoom into that meeting if you'd like. That's at 5:30 on Thursday, just an opportunity for the neighbor, any of the neighbors to ask questions or or comments. And then after that, that process then goes into a supply for a conditional use permit. And then it heads into the into the city's process and things along those lines. But it's just, that's the first step. Go ahead, Carrie.
Sorry. Well, will the link for the candidate forum be on the website also?
Yes, we'll have a post. And it's gone out on social media too.
Thank you.
Sue, did you have a question about?
Yeah, just a quick one about the sign. So are, do we have any examples to show the community people? How the lights are going to work and like this is an example of bright, but then and so on, remember we
Yeah, absolutely. We we actually, we we took a, we had the vendor actually deliver a sign about the similar in size, similar functionality. It was on a trailer. They brought it in. They ran it for several hours, both while it was light out and then when it started to get dark and neighbors were able to come and take a look and city council people were able to come and take a look. And so that was actually is that in August, maybe? I think it was. And so, so they've had that opportunity. So better than just, you know, doing it on paper, we actually brought out what exactly as as close as we could to what exactly be going up there. So and I think what they saw was our ability to keep that sign dimmed over time, you know, as it got darker, the sign got darker. And then also the new city ordinance has us, I think, turning it off at 10:30 at night anyway. And so I think we can accommodate a lot of those, those same things. So. Alright. That's it. Next report. Thank you for your report. Next report is summer school update.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick update on summer school. We've actually started the process of developing, you'd think in February, we're in the middle of everything, but summer school, we actually get the ball rolling in January. I want to recognize Anita Stillwell and Annette Kelly in the Teaching and Learning Department. They do a lot to keep summer school working. They do an amazing job to make sure that all goes smoothly. This year, we're excited to be able to expand opportunities. If you can picture where we were a year ago and thinking about summer school, just a giant question mark. We had no idea what we'd be able to do. So it took a lot just to get that launched. It was a successful yet downscaled summer school. We're looking forward to be able to expand some opportunities. As Nick said, this is an opportunity to start to roll them, roll some things back and get back to a level of normalcy. A couple of things we'll be focusing on. Expanded opportunities based on student interest and then strengthening transitions. We see summer school as an underutilized opportunity to strengthen the transition from fifth grade to sixth grade. And then from eighth grade to ninth grade. So those are some of the things we'll be focusing on as we do our planning. At the elementary level, the first session will be June 14th to the 25th. Registration begins on March 1st. Be held at North Hudson and Hudson Prairie from eight to noon. Again, we'll have some new courses and a new format where some of the courses will be one hour, some will be two hours and some will be four hours for those deep dives into areas of interest for our students. We'll be ramping up the class size a little bit because we brought it way, way down last year. It'll still be considerably less than we would have in a typical class during the school year. And then our August is when we do our reading and math camps, a couple of changes there. It will be open to all students instead of just targeted students. We believe it's an opportunity that many students will be able to benefit from. And we want families to be able to make that choice. That runs August 2nd through the 13th. Registration begins on April 1st. At the middle school, same dates as the elementary, June 14th to the 25th and August 2nd through the 13th. Again, looking at some transition work, helping students with that transition from eighth grade into the high school. Looking at some fun enrichment courses and there I'd like to recognize Trevor Hagerman, the associate principal that leads summer school and has brought some exciting new ideas to the table. At high school, and when we say high school, we're saying eighth grade plus, because we have our eighth grade students do most of their summer school work at the high school. So they have that opportunity to get used to that, that building. They're running their dates a little bit differently. That'll be June 7th through July 2nd. In addition to some of the other things we've discussed, they also run Raider Elite there. And then a lot of their summer school is credit recovery for students that need a little bit more time to meet the expectations of each course. And then extended school year, got this information from Erin. This is for students who in their IP calls for additional instruction throughout the summer. Session one, July 2nd or 12th, sorry, to the 23rd and session two, August 2nd through the 12th. And the building based programs for that will be at Willow River and North Hudson. Any questions?
All those dates that you had with the corresponding programs, is that all on the website? Where would people look to?
Yes, they will all be on the website. Once we open up registration, then everything is posted with all the details on the website.
And alright, so and generally the dates of earliest registration is what?
March 1st is the one, yep, when it opens. So
Alright.
Couple of weeks.
Any other questions regarding the summer school update? Otherwise, hearing none, we'll move right into secondary science curriculum update.
Excellent. And I I will just introduce that briefly as well. So secondary science is in phase three of the curriculum improvement process. And phase three is about learning experiences. This is the time when teachers and the curricular teams start to plan what students will actually be engaging in under the new iteration of the curriculum. It's an exciting time in the curriculum process because you spend a lot of time setting the stage and talking about those desired outcomes. When you start to plan what it will actually look like, it's an exciting transition. There's a lot that goes on in secondary science. It's a big department with a lot of moving parts. I'm going to turn it over to Ivy Wheeler and she's going to introduce a curriculum specialist from the middle school and from the high school. Both are outstanding and they'll tell you a little bit more about this process and I will turn it over to Ivy.
Thanks, Dave. Good evening. As Dave said, we're going to give an update on secondary science and here to share with you this evening are Erin Garing and Mary Beth Elliott. Erin Garing is an instructional specialist at the high school and Mary Beth Elliott, an instructional specialist at the middle school. They're going to speak a little bit about phase three and what happens in phase three. And then more specifically, what we have done so far this year at the middle school and at the high school. And I will pass it to Mary Beth.
Thanks Ivy. As Dave kind of alluded to, in phase one, we focus on desired results and on this phase two, evidence of learning. And when we get to phase three, it's really teacher's favorite phase because they're able to focus on the learning activities and they're able to kind of take some ideas right away from meetings that they're having and start using those in their classroom. So on this slide, we have kind of the pieces that make up phase three, which is designing high quality learning experiences. What do they look like? Teachers are able to have focused discussion on that planning to ensure what learning occurs and how it occurs for all students. They also create a resource, a resource rubric to evaluate any materials. And this has been really important and we've focused on this in phase, we've had this focus in phase three with language arts and with math. But the teachers go through multiple areas such as the science content, focus of instruction, student materials, teacher materials, assessment, digital resource, disciplinary resources. And then this year we added equity. And we talk about in each one of those areas, what specifically we're looking for in a resource. In equity, we talked about that students see the resource themselves. Learners are represented throughout the resources and the images and in the text. And that teachers have the ability to modify the resources to increase the learners accessibility for all our learners. And it helps us stay focused when we're having sales presentations. Because when the sales presentations start to occur, it's easy to lose focus when they present some cool things that a material might be able to do. And so these evaluation, this evaluation tool we create becomes really important. The next thing that we do is we identify some resources that we'd like to evaluate. We hear from those resources or identify which resources we want to pilot. Then we're, we will be creating unit plans that focus on a unit overview, the length of time the unit occurs. And during understandings, essential questions, priority standards, assessments. And then the topics that are covered within the unit and the learning activities that will occur. Then we'll go on to build a scope and sequence and that scope and sequence kind of lays out the duration of our units. And the chronicle chronological order that it will occur. By the end of this phase, we also submit any new course proposals. More so that's a for the high school than at the middle school. And I'm going to turn it over to Erin, that's going to talk about the courses.
So all students at the middle school follow the sequence of science six, then science seven, science eight. And then when we get to the high school, students have a little bit more flexibility in selecting a pathway. We are always working on making more paths accessible to more students. And so one of the shifts that we made was biology first in ninth grade and the first year of that was last year. This year we have our, in our second year with biology first and our big bubble is at the chemistry and physics at at grade 10 and 11. So some mixed classes right now. And then in our work moving forward, we're really going to focus on how can we open up more classes? Make more classes more accessible for all students. Then if you want to go ahead to the next. So with the new science standards, the NGSS and the Wisconsin standards are essentially the same, but there are three major components. We have the science and engineering practices, the cross cutting concepts and the disciplinary core ideas. The disciplinary core ideas are essentially what your content is. Your cross cutting concepts are your standards and how they're connected to one another. And the science and engineering practices are the probably the biggest shift with these new standards. And that's really how our students demonstrating their learning. One of the other big shifts is using phenomena to drive instruction. And so really it's the idea of using discrepant events, things that make students question and wonder and want to learn, to engage in the thinking and problem solving. There are a lot of resources that are continually coming, becoming available as people have more access to these new standards. But one example is within the Wisconsin standards, they actually have an appendix that provides phenomenon examples to connect the standards and the learning to students with Wisconsin applications so that we have more equitable access for all students. At the high school this year, we've spent most of our time focusing on learning about the science and engineering practices. Science and engineering practices are those eight colorful tabs that you see at the top. Each standard, so if you take a look at the the white diagram, that is the box around it, the orange box is called a performance expectation. And each perform, performance expectation contains one of those science and engineering practices. And that's the mode in which students should be demonstrating their understanding of that particular content. Mary Beth, do you want me to keep going on the high school?
Go ahead.
Okay, so in process, at the high school, we have, we've been working on professional learning around the SCPs and that in is our guide to our resource selection. We're also going to be talking, once we have our resources selected, diving more into our assessment practices and how we can shift those practices to align to those science and engineering practices. And then our next steps are, right now, we are in the process of developing a rubric that we're And then our next steps are, right now, we are in the process of developing um, a rubric that we're using to evaluate our resources. Um, I have teachers that are just now telling, kind of communicating with me what resources they would like to see. Um, and then I will be reaching out to the reps to get them in so that we can follow the rubric like Mary Beth was um, explaining pre- earlier. And then uh, once we get those resources in hand, we'll be continuing that assessment work. Um, it typically that would happen a little sooner, but with our timeline this year and with all things COVID, it'll, it'll just kind of shift a little bit later than we would like, but it'll happen um, soon.
And at the middle school. Um, we've. We completed our resource evaluation criteria that I talked about earlier. And we already have evaluated resources and we identified a high quality resource that we're currently piloting. So we looked at six different resources and we have picked one to pilot that's being pi- that is in pilot right now mode in every grade level. And then our next steps will be to complete the unit plans and then align assessments. And when we, we align assess, assessments, what we do is we create a series of formative assessments that ensures student learning, ensures students learning as they make progress to the goal prior to the end of unit assessment. So those are two things that after we pick our resource, we'll be continuing with. Um, and then as a teaching and learning team, we continue to offer support. Tim, if you want to go to that next slide. Uh, the curriculum improvement process really drives this work. Um, and we continue to facilitate it as a teaching and learning team. The teachers have met even through the COVID times and collabor, collaborated with each other in grade levels and in building level PLC teams. And then Erin and I have continued to meet with PLCs and PLC leaders as well as support the individual teachers in the curriculum improvement process and in the um, the, the phase three development. And now I think we're on to any questions.
Okay, any questions board members too?
I was just, I, I don't have, have that page in front, or a slide in front of me of the standards, but um, I was just curious if many or most of these have, have a universality to them. Like, you know, now we're listening to the World Health Organization talk about pandemic and so on and begin to realize that someone in Switzerland or Japan or, you know, South Africa, they, they sort of all talk the same way. And I just wondered uh, if there's a kind of universality to um, to, to this list of standards. Does that make sense? I mean, in terms of um, one's uh, expectations in learning science.
Yeah, so that would actually be the science and engineering practices. Those would be that universal language that a kid or uh, out in the real world using mathematical computation, computational thinking on developing and using models, that's really gearing kids up to be prepared to have conversations outside of the school day and outside of the context of the classroom.
I think that's excellent.
For the questions from board members. Dave, do you have another comment?
I was just going to say, um, this team has done a great job. We're especially fortunate to have Erin Garing on the team. She was an outstanding science teacher in a different district and in Hudson. So she brings a lot of expertise. So I was really happy she was here to answer Sue's question.
Okay, maybe we have another one. Heather.
Yeah, I, I was just going to say, as, as the parent of a ninth grader um, struggling with biology who, who asked the question that I think many of us have heard from our high school age children who are not planning on being physicians or scientists. Why do I have to learn this? I think it's really helpful to see this slide that shows like, it's not so much about what you're learning, it's about the skills you're developing and seeing these eight blocks, I think is really helpful. Um, it's too bad that there's not a way that we can easily communicate, provide this to all parents. Because I think this, this is the answer to that question, right? The why do I have to learn about cell reproduction? Um, it's, you will, yes, you're learning about cell reproduction, but these are actually the skills that you're developing. So I think that's, um, that's really helpful to see. Thank you.
Yes, not to mention the critical thinking that's being developed and in a year where science matters. I think it's really important to develop this curriculum. Yes, Sue.
Oh, this, this is just a silly question, but uh, do kids in um, like biology labs and so on, do they still have to like draw what they're seeing, you know, under a microscope or their leaf identification? Or I just curious, I mean, that was the part I was really good at was the drawing, the drawing for my lab books. Students wanted to pay me money to do their lab books. But I, I, but I think that uh, do they have that kind of, I mean, you know, there's something to that and then just doing everything on a computer.
Do we have an answer to that one?
Erin?
Yeah, we, yes, we still use microscopes and we do some of that. Um, but I think it's really shifting to that modeling component, not so much can you draw what you see? But what um, how is that going to change or is, how is that going to impact? Or how is that going to be different over time? Um, and that, taking it to that next level. But we definitely still have to start off with those basic skills of how do you use it? How do you manipulate the microscope and, or whatever else it might be as far as equipment that you're using?
Thank you, Erin.
I want to thank uh, Mary Beth, Erin uh, for, and Ivy for um, being able to present this. And thank you for your work on the curriculum development. It's a very important process.
Thank you so much.
All right, and with that, I guess next up is equity audit update and I, I'm looking over towards Erin. You're pulling on your mic, so I mean equity really is something we're intentionally trying to spread throughout all departments and throughout the whole cabinet, but
For sure.
You know, it's, it's important. We have a point person, so thank you, Erin.
Taking the mask off as a clue, I think, right?
Yeah.
Um, definitely this has been kind of a cross department project and we're really excited about the work that's happening. Um, and looking forward to looking at the results and seeing what improvements we can make for students. Just a short update, um, our equity audit focus group started today. Um, so they were here or via Zoom all day meeting with um, student services teams at elementaries and uh, general education teams at a couple of elementaries. Those focus groups will continue um, tomorrow as well. Um, and then on February 22nd, our community and parent focus groups start and then um, throughout the month, I'll be doing middle school and high school and our student focus groups um, as well. And so just a reminder, that's in addition to the data collection that they're doing about student programming and staffing levels and things like that. Any questions about where we're at with that?
Well, and I know, yes, Rob, go ahead.
Just uh, as far as uh, participation or have we had any struggles with participation so far as far as filling slots and what have you?
We have not. Um, in terms of um, staff slots, we really were um, trying to be pretty comprehensive across all staffing areas to make sure that we had as many voices as possible heard. Um, and making sure that we had sub coverage. I know HR worked really hard on making sure that we had sub coverage so that staff could participate, which is a challenge this year.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And then for those, those folks at home, as far as this audit goes, there's been some questions on what the scope is. Can you at a real high level just touch on what are some of the things that we're having conversations about?
Sure. So one of the things that we're having conversations about um, our student programming. Um, ranging from our special education programs all the way up to our um, gifted and talented programs and just looking at how students are able to access those and what you know, what if any improvements we can make to make those programs more accessible to as many students um, and meet the needs of all of our students. Um, and so are we, you know, potentially are there gaps? I mean, I think we know gaps exist, um, but how can we identify those and then, and target um, shifts if needed?
Sure. Thank you.
Very, very good. All right, any other questions from board members? Okay, then moving on to the school start time committee. And uh, see Tracy nods, so all right, how do, where are we setting with that?
So we, the group met on January 28th, we had 25 of our original members who were able to join us. Um, the primary work of that particular meeting was working in small groups to discuss challenges and opportunities um, as it related to all of the, what we called puzzle pieces to this decision making. Required instructional time, sleep research, activities outside the school day, childcare and family life, transportation, and then asking them to bring forward any other considerations that weren't um, identified in those previously. So they spent most of their time in those small groups. Dave and Erin are also part of that work and um, I think we were all in agreement that the small groups worked. Um, it, it was a really good conversation um, in all of those groups. So we, we have our next meeting on March 4th. Um, and we're hoping to bring, one of the requests was to talk to a school that has made the change in their school start times. So we're reaching out to similar sized schools that have had that experience.
Heather?
Tracy, I'm curious. I know when we were doing our attendance boundary work with committees, there was an opportunity for the board to observe. I feel like observing a Zoom meeting is more intrusive because your face is there on the screen. Are these meetings in general recorded so they could be watched or is there a way without actually attending to just kind of get a sense for a flavor for those conversations?
We did not record. Right now, they are Zoom meetings. Um, I know for the, the three of us, we just pop in and out um, of the meeting area of the small groups.
Yeah, okay, yeah. All right, that makes it tough.
And just generally, what would be the timeframe? I know we have a date for the next meeting and sometimes it depends on the work that's being done in the interim, but what kind of timeframes beyond that might there be?
We asked them to commit through the end of the school year and hoping that they have their work done. They may decide that they need more time, but that was the commitment that we asked of them as we restarted the committee. Um, I mean, they've already identified a need to, and, and we knew that going in that there would have to be some um, conversation beyond just the committee work. So um, you know, like some of the questions that they have raised, um, some of the themes about, you know, how do we make sure that everybody understands the research, you know? So having some type of opportunity which they have not discussed yet for um, the larger parent community and actual Hudson community to, to hear about their work and hear about the options that they may be bringing forward.
With that commitment for the committee to meet through the end of the years, there a hope or expectation of some kind of progress report being given to the board, say in June?
Yes.
Okay. Great, yes, Bob.
So how many people did you say were involved with this latest?
There were 25 who participated in January, the original group of invited folks, about 60, we never had a full 60. We, we had representation on, at that meeting from all of our stakeholder groups, so that was good. So we had students there as well, well as parents, um, mental health professionals, um, staff. So yes, it's smaller than what we originally intended, but I, I still think the conversation was robust and the different viewpoints were brought forward.
So, so we don't think we're going to get to those numbers that we had at the first meeting before?
That 60 or 50? No, I, I don't, it, there were um, at least, at least 10 of those folks who contacted me to just say they couldn't continue to commit beyond. I mean, originally when we asked them to participate, it was, we would, they would have been done long before now.
Thank you, right. Carrie, you have a question?
And I'm sorry, if, and I think you just answered this, but there were students at this most recent?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, I just want to thank you for continuing to uh, push this um, along because waiting for some type of criteria of having at least 50 participants, we could be waiting here another year. And um, I think it was totally reasonable um, taking the hiatus and seeing those uh, COVID numbers take off like they did, especially in November. I think it would have been foolhardy to, you know, meet in the, in the teeth of that, but now that um, recognize that this is going to be around a while and thankfully the numbers are coming down. Hopefully the Zoom meetings will be able to end soon and we'll be able to meet in person at some point. But being able to keep the momentum going under these circumstances, I would commend you, the group, and thank you for your extra leadership on that. Heather?
So Tracy clarifying question, it sounds then like if someone were to ask the earliest impact this group's work would have, would be a recommendation that could potentially impact the 22, 23 school year, but that would be the very earliest, yeah? If they're not finishing their work until the end of this year, it certainly would not be for this fall. So it would be at the earliest, the 22, 23 school year that we'd be talking about. Okay, thank you.
But unless they came forward and said, no change. Yeah.
There you go. Thank you for that distinction. All right, uh, next up. Next up is the uh, January official student count.
Okay.
Tim, all right.
So you've got the official count for the third uh, for the second Friday in January, rather. And our numbers overall are slightly better. If you look under that column, which is DPI totals, from 54, 14 up uh, 14 students to 54, 28. So a slight improvement. If you compare those numbers and you say, you know, when we talked about this in October with the January account, we're down about uh, 240 students. We're down to 10 now roughly. But when you ask where did those kids go? Um, we had uh, homeschool was up uh, about 113. Um, when you look at the numbers for January, it's about 113. When you compare it to last January, so uh, a lot of those kids went to homeschool. And uh, when you look at open enrollment out of the district, those numbers are up slightly in, in the September to the January. And if you compare it to last January, they're up about 60. So that accounts for about 173 of the 210 that were down. Uh, so that really kind of tells you where they went. They open enrollment out and uh, and homeschool are the two biggest impacts that we've had. So, and see Bruce has a question.
Bruce, I do. Um, did we survey any of those folks? I mean, I'm just curious why people would have chosen homeschool versus like virtual learning or IDL, you know, if that's such a big number, did we? Yeah, did we get any feedback or are we thinking about getting feedback from those folks?
Yep, we actually um, surveyed and called them individually, each family and um, asked them that question, why they made the choice. And then um, secondarily, what it might take to um, bring them back into the system. Uh, the homeschool, a lot of that was driven by the fact that there aren't high quality, I shouldn't say it that way. There aren't as many high quality virtual learning experiences for elementary age students. So homeschool for a family that may be um, already working from home becomes a more viable option.
Right, and I can just anecdotally, knowing one family that um, huge supporters of one of our elementaries, I won't single out which one it is, but and yet they opted to go homeschool because, just because they didn't want to potentially have to go in and out of um, virtual and in-person learning. That explains that. What I'm not clear on is the open enrollment out. Why, I mean, it's not like there's another district that has had more face-to-face instruction than Hudson. So why are they open enrolling out?
I think many families chose an open enrollment out for a different virtual school so that it could be all asynchronous. Um, that they were wanting something besides our synchronous option for
Okay.
Individual distance learning.
All right, but, but it's not, that's a gr- a group that actually didn't get the benefit of our synchronous learning from day one. They just assumed it would be a certain way. And then it, or, or a lot of those people that started with our synchronous and then went to open enroll someplace else. Do you understand my question?
I do understand the question. I'm not sure of the numbers for you exactly. Um, but I, I would say we did see an increase in open enrollment out to virtual schools, um, especially at our elementary levels.
I was just curious if that open enrollment out happened after, you know, the first of the year?
It was a mix of both.
Before we even started.
I think Jamie, I saw a lot of Facebook discussion of elementary parents who were looking for something because they didn't want their kid sitting, looking at us, so they didn't want synchronous. They didn't want their kid looking, sitting at a screen all day. And because Hudson really didn't have the asynchronous for elementary, they were getting referred by parents to other options outside of the district.
And because Hudson really didn't have the asynchronous for elementary, they were getting referred by parents to other options outside of the district where they could get asynchronous, you know, not in-person um, schooling for their elementary kids. So I think my hope is that we'll get those kids back. You know, once, once we're, you know, that, 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 once those parents feel comfortable sending their kids to school again full-time, that we're going to get those kids back.
All right. Any others of, yes, Rob?
Yeah, so with regards to that asynchronous conversation, you know, I've, I've been approached by a couple of parents that you know, who knows what's going to happen with regard to COVID. And they were wondering, is, is Hudson ultimately going to be able to offer an asynchronous option for elementary kids? Or uh, has there been any conversation in that regard?
Sure, and that's, yeah, that, I think that's probably the big question out there, right? And without knowing what next year will bring, we don't know specifically what we'll be able to offer, what we won't be able to offer. What we do know is we're engaged in the process of learning from our current experience, interviewing families. We just had our teaching, learning advisory council meeting last week. The entire focus was learning about the experience. How did you experience this as a family, as a parent? How did your child experience this, learning from that and then making the best decisions? You know, as we know, there is no perfect program in this environment. There just, there just isn't. Um, the overwhelming feedback we received from families was that they were thankful for the synchronous experience. But we knew going into that, it wouldn't work for everyone. So trying to run multiple programs is the challenge. We've already divided teachers' attention quite a bit by having them run IDL and in-person at the same time. So running another program becomes problematic, but um, we'll continue to study it certainly.
All right, anything else on that? Otherwise, move on to our action portion of the agenda and I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda along with expenditures pursuant to the language.
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob.
Move approval of the consent items and that the chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $1,188,503.68.
Second.
Motion by Rob, second by Bruce. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Consent agenda and expenditures are approved. Next, I would um, entertain a motion um, consistent with the language that's in the agenda uh, based upon our prior uh, public hearing.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move to authorize the administration to request that DPI waive the minimum number of hours of instruction set forth in Wisconsin statute 121.02, parent one, parent F, for the district's 2020, 2021 school year due to the ongoing COVID-19 public health emergency.
Second.
Right, motion by Heather, second by Sue. Is there any discussion? And again, Nick, just clarification, I mean, is, whereas, is this set us apart or make us unique from other districts?
No, it's just, this is pretty common and really, uh, other than the early dismissals that we're doing on Wednesdays. Otherwise, we, we would normally meet all our hour requirements. So this is just, because we're doing the early dismissals on Wednesdays, you probably won't hit the hour requirements at all levels. And so um, we're very close, but uh, this, this gives us that kind of cushion. So that's uh, that's where we're sitting. So no, this is, this is pretty typical. I think there were close to 50 different waivers we could go for as it relates to COVID and, and things that we could ask for waivers on. Uh, this is really the only one that we felt was something that we needed to do because we've been uh, you know, allowing face-to-face instruction since the beginning of the year. So we're, this is it.
Any further questions on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Bruce, second by Carrie. All those in favor of adjournment say aye.